Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for its stand, one nation, under God, and with the redeemed and blessed. A brief floor of silence. Thanks very much. We'll get started. I need a motion to approve the February 20, 2012 minutes.
On the motion.
Is there a second? Eight seconds. And we have a motion on the floor to approve February 20.
I have a change.
Okay. That's what I was telling you. I thought you might.
In the members' presence section, it says that Ginny arrived at 7:25, and then in the body of it, it says she arrived at 7:37. Either way, just let's pick one.
It doesn't mention there that I left at 7:35 either.
Yes, it says the right budget.
Oh, it does say.
It's in the middle, but it's not in the roster. I'd love to take them like my total husband.
So Ginny, what time did you get here?
I'm going to assume that the first time is the correct time because I know I said something when you came in about what time it was. So we'll go with the first one, 7:25. Any other changes, deletions, additions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving as repaired? Opposed? Abstentions? Or any change of saying? One, two, three.
I think Sue Tremblay is abstained as well.
Yes.
Six. Seems in favor, not against, two abstentions.
Three abstentions.
Three abstentions.
Two abstentions.
That would be five then.
Five, zero, three.
No, five.
Oh, okay.
Correspondents, I will pass around the substitute reports. Commendations and good news.
Can I go first?
Please.
I don't have.
She's excited.
I am. It's really cool. I don't have anything really, except that we're happy to be back and all the usual. But Mr. Landano, who is our music teacher over at Maple Avenue, he traveled to Haiti over February vacation with five other music teachers from New Hampshire. The group collected music instrument donations and brought them to a newly opened music school just outside of Quarterfinals. Third grade Maple Avenue students had the option to purchase a recorder for a child in Haiti when they ordered their own recorders earlier in Square. Fifty-four recorders were donated and delivered to the music school along with $75,000 worth of string instruments to jumpstart a string program for the school. Mr. Landano also led a clinic with the school's band and conducted them in a concert. Other projects included delivering supplies to schools and other clothes toiletries to the churches and organizations. Mr. Landano's organization also raised enough money to have a water filtration system installed in the music school. And I have pictures, if I can pass around, that are, the kids are in the pictures. It's really neat that there's a kindergarten class, and in the back you can see there's a fifth grade class. Here, he was actually conducting in orchestra. There was a friend of Mr. Landano's that traveled with them, and there were some kids that should have been in school but weren't. Their parents either couldn't afford for them to go or they just weren't in school. But he just brought out his guitar, started playing, and the kids just all gathered around, listening to the music. So you'll see pictures of Mr. Landano with the children in Haiti. But he said it was a wonderful experience. A couple of nights, he got to sleep under the stars, he said. So he said it was interesting. He got back from sleeping under the stars to snow. Yeah, so here, he was just playing in the jungle. It was, it's just really neat, the stories that he shared. I'm going to pass these around, if that's okay. And in this one picture, I thought this was a little cool, but there's a woman that traveled with them, and she's actually, New Kids on the Block, it's the mother of Jonathan and Jordan Knight. That's her mom. I thought it was stupid. I started seeing step by step, and I said, does anybody know these guys? And they were like, no, Andrew's. I was looking at them like, what are you talking about? But it's just really neat. So I want to probably get pictures around, so I will.
Could you be a little excited?
I want to go with this year. It's really cool. So that's all I have. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Well, we put Peggy down for a CD for a good reason.
I'm sure I've got one somewhere.
They don't know who's there.
They don't know.
Maybe we should stop.
Great vacation week.
I know, it's hard to go after that. The week before vacation, our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders took the math league contest, and Nicole's really excited about it and looking forward to getting the results because usually we do pretty well with that. We had some pretty good scores, I know in sixth grade that we were going to shoot up, so we'll let you know how it goes, but that went well. Winter carnival went extremely well. It was advertised in the Gostown news and to be implanted being advertised, but it was, so we ended up having a little bit over 400 people, which was a really good turnout, was really, really high. They made a good amount of money. It's one of their fundraisers for the year, and they do various things every year with the money. And this year, because they made a little bit of extra money, they told me today that they were thinking about, since it was such a big success and they made a lot of money, that they were considering, one of the things they're considering, and they haven't yet formalized it yet, but is to have a barbecue for the incoming New Boston and Dunbarton kids. That's one of their ideas that they're shuffling around with, some of the extra money that they made because the winter carnival was so successful. And the last thing I have, that next Wednesday, I believe the 14th, is our 30th Annual March Arts Festival that's going to be held at our school at 6:00 PM and is free. It'll feature performances from the entire music department, grades five through eight. There'll also be performances from the drama company, and student artwork will be displayed throughout the building. So if you can, please join us for our celebrating the arts.
What time?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, on the 14th, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to come in? Oh, sure. Well, winter carnival was really exciting Friday. The skits were really, really good. Seniors came in first place, unfortunately, but it was really, really good. The freshmen did West Side Story. The sophomores did High School Musical. Seniors did Wizard of Oz, and the seniors did Grease. For theater, their regional festival is March 24th. The state festival is March 30th. For sports, this weekend, hockey had a big game against Oyster River. That was their quarterfinal game. And I'm actually not sure how much.
It was a horrible, very sad loss.
Yeah. I heard it was. Also, the cheerleading had their state championship pre wins at Pinkerton, and they won. So that's really good. They've been doing really good with that the past couple of years. And that's it.
Thank you for leaving me a couple of things. The last day of winter carnival, we had a Kimmekan Day, Assistant Principal of the Year. A great video, the kids were just incredible during the whole presentation, and Mr. De Alessandro came and wrote a proclamation, so that was very nice. We have our first team they placed as a webpage design, and most of those people that did the webpage are from Gostown, not from the Central. So that's going on to another competition as well. Boys basketball, Wednesday night, 7:00 PM here, quarterfinals, B, there, B Square. And of course, John Stark.
So it's boys?
Boys, yeah.
Thursday, the 7th?
7th, yeah. And.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, it's like?
Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you.
Wednesday, the 7th.
Oh, Wednesday, the 7th, at 7:00. And course selections are ongoing, and it looks like they're having a good return, so we can get those in and get them processed.
Any other commendations or good news? Public comment? Standing committee reports, administration and finance?
We had a non-meeting meeting. We had no. However, I do have a manifest that I submit. I put forward a manifest of 900 and $90,000, $105.72.
Can I get a second on that motion?
On seven minutes.
And it consists of the major items. Payroll was $495,543.37. Payroll taxes, $154,215.21. Finex, the workers comp premium, $6,151. The total of payroll taxes and benefits of $655,909.68. In special ed, tutoring and instructional services were $5,109. And Safeway Transportation, $5,526, for a total of $10,635. In general expenses, San Anselm's College, $6,915. That's ice time. Fred Ford Oil, $21,874. PSNH, $8,612. The SAU, March Assessment, $76,546. And the Gostown Truck for regular transportation, $93,812.40. For general expenses of $207,760.18. It was really a light period.
Any questions? Seeing not all in favor of approving the manifest as motion? Opposed?
Yeah.
Abstentions? All in favor?
Got a lot of information items. I'm trying to add information. BTS billed $7,500, which last month we asked for more information, and we received it. And the building committees voted to pay reconstruction if the board agrees. We have finished with BTS.
I need a motion.
I need a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? To, to, just kind of bring anybody else up to speed.
Reconstruction services.
Right.
And they are completed now. They're all done, and.
And there simply were some, when that came before you the first time, there simply were some outstanding questions.
There was some.
We saw clarification, and the building committee got clarification. All in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? Abstentions?
Opposed.
Was that an opposed, Suzanne?
No.
Four, okay.
Four. We have six in favor. Seven in favor of abstentions. Any abstentions?
Another bill. Another bill's been approved already. CNK, for $17,340. We have all the available documents, and building committee, the lesbian recommended payment. Or not lesbian, I'm sorry.
Telephone poll, is that?
Telephone poll or email poll, if you will.
And we have, we have the final documents, so.
We have everything that.
All the deliverables are in order?
Yes.
We have them in our office. We're ready to build.
All in favor? Actually, I need a second. Jen, second. All in favor? Opposed?
Yeah.
Abstentions? You have this. I've now figured out the time of the law.
Yeah.
I got some information.
Glad you have it.
We got some information items here. Just for your information, the driving school, Mr. Ross, is about to finish his first year, and we're waiting till June, I guess, to decide whether to recommend extending the option for one more year. Second item, Icon Diesel Machines, their contract is up June 30th. Yeah, and Ray is putting together a committee from New Boston, Dunbar, and Gostown, a joint committee to investigate, going further with another contract, and what we want to do. It's just information. Now, the morning school.
Can I just ask, these questions don't need to be answered. I'm just going to sort of throw them out on the table. One, do we, can we evaluate our usage over the term of the contract to figure out where we're at in terms of the need? I mean, are we sort of, in terms of volume, are we in the same place that we have?
That's part of the committee's work that's going on right now, because there are a couple of schools that are looking to change the equipment complement, either to one of large machines or to smaller machines, what have you, that we're looking at that.
I guess the only other piece of this might be, given the state of technology, is there the potential for a paperless component in some segments of what we're doing? And that's a, that may be a much larger question than could be entertained.
We have that feature now with electronic bags and scanning activities, if you will. We are, we can remain paperless to the extent that we want to.
Well, from an administration standpoint, I know we've been pretty good about that. I was actually thinking about at the building level and for things that students are producing. And I really, I don't know how much of it is paper, how much of it is electronic, or even if, even if the two are interchangeable, it may be that they are.
I would say mostly at the high school, you would see, I mean, every, every kid has login and an access. I think at the high school, teachers are, it's easier for teachers, they email me that, or some of them have Google sites that they use, that they can put them on. I wouldn't say we're totally there. Teachers who are comfortable with technology are doing more of that, realities, just because kids are doing things on, you know, electronically, you just email it.
Right.
At some point, most of them are printed out, though still, because you're marking them up, you're grading them.
I'm thinking, sort of thinking out loud and understanding how some of those tools work and that the capacity exists for sticky notes, comments, things like that. It may be that there's a, there's a task and instructional piece of that. It also may be that for some number of students, that wouldn't be a workable solution, reliable option at all. It's, again, it's, as we go forward, as technology gets better and better, it's, I think it's got to be part of the dialogue. Suzanne?
What?
I think she's fine.
You okay? I didn't know whether you wanted to say something, or we're just clearing?
I was clearing my throat.
Okay.
One other thing, though.
Yes.
The morning school, their year is up, and I'd like to request permission to investigate any of their programs for three years, one year with a two-year out.
And so that'll come before admin and finance, and then you'll make a recommendation? Do you need any motion to explore that, or?
No.
That's it? Terrific. Thanks very much. Any questions before we move on? My human resources.
Our last meeting for this period would be on Monday. If people could let Denise know yay or nay, so we can make sure we have a forum on Monday, that would be great.
And that's at 6:00?
6:00 at the SAU.
I'll be there.
Can I ask HR? I know you guys have a full plate, but going back to our meeting, two weeks ago, we talked about the athletic policy at the middle school as far as having the fall sports start at a clean slate and waive that requirement. I know it's our policy as it is on the boards now, but I was just wondering if HR would be so kind as to just look a little bit further and just investigate the merits of both sides. I see both sides of the argument. I absolutely see the side of the argument as it was presented two weeks ago, but I also see the statistics as far as the benefits of extracurricular activities as they play on children. It's very good, this is what we want. We want the kids engaged, we want the kids in after-school activities. And so perhaps if this measure would support this for some children at risk, I'm not sure of the demographic, not sure of anything else, but I think it at least warrants some further, further research if we could.
Now, I wasn't asked that one. Do you happen to know what policy area you've been looking at?
JJI dash R.
I was gonna say. Yes.
Not that we need to discuss this fully at this point, but I happened to run into Steve Fountain before the meeting, and I had sent him an email earlier asking him if there was a middle school standards board, like there is for the high school standards board, which is NHIA for high school. That goes counter to what NHIA recommends for their high school athletes. Steve just mentioned in the hallway that he would not be in support of a middle school comes on where the slate is wiped clean every fall.
Good to know.
But I won't speak for the chair, but I know that.
We could definitely review it, that committee, and see if we can get some research of some other schools and networks.
Yeah, and that's an interesting piece to have now, that we didn't have two weeks ago. That is helpful in the decision as well. Thank you.
Hanging communications.
We met tonight and talked about lots of stuff, in particular, the board retreat. As you guys recall, we had a retreat last April, May. It is that time again to start planning for the board retreat, so Stacy is going to be so kind as to send out a meeting wizard tomorrow with some dates coming up in April, some Saturdays, to see what we can all put together as a date to meet. For this year's board retreat, we're looking to revisit the goals of the mission statement that we put together last year, just see where we're at with those, but more deeply do some planning for the next year, really look at the roles of the school board, what the role is, what we're looking to do, as well as look at the committees. We're looking to have it facilitated again, maybe a different facilitator, maybe the same, I'm not sure, but that's where we are with the board retreat. We also just did some general planning, you know, getting rid of her volunteer appreciation, getting rid of the teacher appreciation. Our next meeting will be the first Monday of, I forget the month, April. The first Monday in April, sorry.
Okay. I have a suggestion that everybody's amenable to. It would be very easy to provide everybody with a document that covered the goals that we put together last year. I think it would be useful for all of us to, or it would be useful to be, if it would also be useful to you, to get a copy of that goal document, to reflect on the year based upon the goals, and then use that as a starting place and get some feedback going, some suggestions about things that we might want to explore, things that we either got to or didn't get to how effectively. And so that before we come together for a meeting, we've already done some groundwork in preparation for that.
I'll send, I can send out last year's agenda to some people that maybe reflect on what we did or didn't get to that people might be interested in.
Does that make sense? And then, once the meeting wizard goes around, then we can sort of set a timeline for getting some responses back, so that when we walk in the door on that Saturday, we'll be able to sort of hit the ground running, and maybe we can pull it together and distribute what we've done before we arrive. So look for the meeting wizard.
That would be it.
CNE.
We have not, we have not met since our last meeting. We are meeting on Monday, the 12th, at 7:00. You can email me or MC whether you can make it on that night or not.
That'll be immediately following. HR.
We have not met since the last meeting. The next meeting.
Some time coming up.
Yeah, it's coming up.
Now, this one's due next, right?
It's March 21st.
March 21st? Okay, it's March 21st.
7:00.
Where does CNE?
Thank you very much.
Does CNE have the SAU?
CNE meets at the SAU immediately following HR, 4th or 7:00, whichever comes first.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
We don't have much going on, it's a good notification, but I'm going next Monday. Manchester School of Technology is having a meeting for superintendents and principals to discuss the changeover that they're looking to do with the four-year program. I've been to one or two meetings so far, but apparently this is at Saraskin, it's a formal presentation of what they're looking to do. One of our biggest concerns is how they're going to kind of market this program to our students, and one is, I want to assure that our students are still able to attend for the two blocks that they go right now, for whatever we're paying for tuition. If they were to attend for a full day, it does mean a full rate of tuition. I suppose the pro is that Manchester is cheaper than Gostown, but it still means a cost to us. It would mean a cost to Dunbar and New Boston, that would be a different cost than to Gostown. And so I need to explore what all of that looks like, and so some of that conversation may also have an impact on area agreement and having that piece of it assure that it gets into whatever that looks like for our students. So I'm going to get some more information next Monday. I think most of you got the School Boards Association legislative updates. You might want to take a look. There's lots of interesting bills that are inexpedient to legislate. Several of the ones on the default budget are all, many of them are inexpedient to legislate and will go away. Let's just take a look at it. It came today. I won't go over all of them, because you guys can read, but it was several pages of where things came out of committee and what will go forward and what won't. So if you didn't get it, just let me know, but it might be interesting to take a look at where things are falling. That's really all I have at this point.
Old business.
So at our last meeting, we were talking about the building committee, and so starting to think about what that, the next step of the phase looks like should, when the Warren Article passes on Tuesday for the building projects. And so the question came up of what was, who was on the committee last time? So the Bartlett Building Committee, when it actually came to the construction time, was administration, three board members, and two community members. So I polled all of the committee members and all the board members. I sent out an email to everybody asking who was interested in serving on that committee. As of this point, I have only Sue Tremblay, who is interested from the school board, and I have Tony DiFranco and Donna Curran, who are currently. I have Tony DeFranco and Donna Curran, who are currently on the Building Committee, who are interested in continuing with that. So if we stay with that same structure, they would fill the community more role, i.e. two other board members to sit on that committee.
If my work schedule permit, I'd like to do it, but I won't know that for at least two and a couple of weeks. But if my work schedule permitted, I'd be glad to do that this year.
I think Monday and Friday meetings.
Yeah, we haven't determined meetings, but they will likely be once a week. If the building projects don't pass, there will be really probably, other than some meetings staggered throughout till next year, doing some more planning. If they pass, it will likely be once or twice a week until we get things going, because there's going to be lots of planning that needs to take place. And so it is a commitment. It will likely be late afternoons.
I guess it'll do what needs to be done.
As I mentioned, Diane said she would do it if needed.
I would dearly like to be involved, but my guess is that given my current schedule of three days out of town a week, that's gonna be really tough.
Question?
Yes.
Who are the voting members?
The voting members are either the committee, the community members or board. We always consider the people who are paid to do their jobs don't get to vote. So it's everybody else. So it's any of the committee members or school board members.
Okay. Just checking.
So we need to...
We have a even number of voting members.
So we either need to have three or five. So right now, we have Sue, Tony, Donna, and then Diane, if she's committing. So we have four. So I mean, we would need at least either one more board member if the board is okay with two board members or one more community member to make it five.
I'll probably add it, but I think I agree with my standard of work around it.
And to the extent that there are days that you can't cover, if, as long as they're Monday or Friday.
I'd definitely be Friday, because they're obviously the end.
Yeah, I definitely would be Fridays.
To the extent that it requires a fill-in, I'd do that.
And fill in the alternate. It's just crazy today. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, just checking.
Okay, so we'll go with the three board members as Sue, Diane, and Keith, and the two community members as Tony and Donna. And maybe Tony will be on the board and then we'll have even more board. Yeah? Okay.
If, if, if it's okay with the board, there is an item of old business that I just want to make mention of, because it would be very easy if we asked to find ourselves in October without having done this. We worked diligently on two collective bargaining agreements that didn't come to fruition this year. Both of our collective bargaining units are operating presently without the benefit of a contract. I would entertain a motion from the board, if it was so desired or if we even wanted to discuss it, to send letters to both of those associations requesting that they return to the bargaining table beginning in April. If there's a motion, if there's not, we will wait on. I just wanted to make sure that we have at least raised it and have a motion by Keith.
I'll second it.
I got seconds from everybody, so it's like the board's second to the motion. So we'll do that. We will be reconstituted, or at least we'll know what our composition is by April. So let's, let's not make it April 1st.
May I suggest we ask starting the beginning of May, because I'm thinking April may be pushing it by the time you have your second board meeting and know your board, you'll elect your chair, and by share at your next meeting and then your next meeting, you'll get into committee assignment, so...
When is our second April meeting? I mean, I just think it's far easier to say, hey, would you get back to us by then? So that we may try to...
Your second April meeting will be the 16th.
Would you, would you please get back to us with available dates by the 16th of April? And we'll get back in touch with you and try to start the process again.
Gotcha.
Thank you very much. New business.
Okay, messaging services. So I am seeking the board's thoughts. So one of the things that Gary and I have been exploring for probably three years now is kind of emergency response systems, emergency call systems. And it started out with looking for, you know, snow calls, so when you send them out. We found kind of alternatives to that. One of the things that we've identified is with the volume of students who have cellphones, when we actually have an emergency or actually have something going on, our note home at the end of the day is not the most effective means. So when we had the lockdown at Mountain View two weeks ago, we were getting phone calls from parents before like the lockdown was even over. And so it makes it difficult. And so Gary and I really started exploring. And one of the reasons this came out is Gary had just gotten an email from Power School and they have partnered with a company to provide this service that interlinks with Power School. And one of our issues has been, most companies don't interlink with anything, so you have to continuously download the data, you have to continuously update everything. You know, we've heard concerns about companies and so we met with this company just the week before vacation and talked to them about it. What it would provide is basically the same services as every other company, abilities to email, abilities to set up different lists so that, what is it? It will allow us to control more, so our coaches, we could actually set up with lists of kids who have basketball. And so they could send out an email using this system versus using their own system, using texting, so that there's a little more control over what is sent out and sent in. It would allow us to, so if we were at the high school and needed to send out a message to only ninth grade parents, we could send out a message to only ninth grade. The interlink between the two systems is phenomenal. It's very easy to use. They gave us a demonstration. It's been the easiest system to use. And so one of, I guess, after the incident at Mountain View where we were getting, where there was information out before we could even get a letter home, it became clearer that a system like this may be more important than just the snow call, so that we could send out a message to parents of the high school when we have a lockdown and say, hey, here's what happened, you know, no need to panic, everything's okay, versus them bringing it home at the end of the day. So they have offered us a fairly decent deal compared to other prices I had gotten. There's no setup fee, which is one thing.
Just out of curiosity, if you did a dry run, do you think you'd get more responses than what was generated? I'm just curious, because it seems to me that telling everybody before the end or in real time may cause your phone lines to ring more rather than less.
Don't you think though that a child phoning home is probably gonna have like a more dramatic story?
Right, and that's what we were, well, we were hoping. Something like this will help us get the word out. It would eliminate the kid who calls the mom and says, we just have, you know, yeah, exactly. And so then the parent would have the information. It would be from us. It would be, here's what the situation was. Do not panic, you know, versus waiting till they got home. So I guess I'm looking for the board's thoughts on it. I mean, I don't really need direction from you to do it, but I'm...
Wonderful idea, Sue. I mean, particularly in Mountain View, my wife kept calls because kids were texting their parents.
Well, that's what happened.
And she calls, what's going on? What's going on? We all want to know.
I had like four calls from parents in my office, just that I knew, saying, Mike, you just called.
Laura's first.
I really do like the idea. The only thing I would have is to make sure you have some sort of option or something if you plan on moving into a texting type of thing, in case you have those people who have plans that it gets charged, so they have...
Right. The system, actually, what we would probably do somehow is send, send something home with like particularly elementary or middle school students where parents would could opt out, that we would not have them and/or they would give us, do they want a tech, you can text, you can email, or you can call. And so some things, I can then set it up that it's only going to send out an email. Like I don't think every parent wants all three all the time, but then we can determine, you know, Gary and I can sit down and say, okay, on snow days, here's what we're going to send out. The other plus is it can, we can put in banks of information, so I can have a snow email already done up and so I can just send it to send out versus me having to at 4:30 type out all these emails. And so there was pluses to that, but yeah, parents, so parents would be able to opt in, opt out, and they can do that by simply logging into Power School as well. So they'll be an option. So that was the one nice thing about that, is they both interrelated.
So you were getting to costs.
Yeah, it's, they gave us a price of $112 a student for a three-year contract, so it comes out to about $3,000 a year, which is significantly less than what other companies we had gotten the cost of, and there was zero setup charge.
Have we done the cost analysis of how much we'll be saving from not having to have all these takes of lists, just like a budget for it?
No, I mean, because it's, I mean, there's not, there's no list.
Well, that's why I just, to kind of show how $3,000 is nothing compared to the fact that we probably would be saving on someone trying to find from this list or that list.
I mean, for me, the $3,000 is more of a saving if we had an emergency or a crisis that we needed to get a message out to parents. Right now, we have no way to do that, other than sending it out that email list or that we have basically downloaded everybody's emails on, which anybody can sign up for. We have like, I don't know, we have like 30,000 names on that list, so anything that goes out on that list, I wouldn't want to go out. If we had a crisis, I would want it to go out to Gotham High School parents only, you know? And so I guess there was, there was no price tag to having a system that allows us to do that. And honestly, in this day and age, the things that have happened, where you would never expect it to happen, I hope it never happens here, but I would want to have that resource should it happen, and we need to get something out.
But I want to make a comment. I mean, a lot of these communities, like Wallpole, New Hampshire has this in place.
Yeah, we have a lot of...
They used it, I mean, it's an occurrence.
Yeah.
So I have to say probably at least 6% of the communities in New Hampshire have already used it.
Oh, at least.
In real time, in real time, who are you gonna send a message to? The kids are calling their parents, but they know where their parents are. They call on their cell phones.
Well, it either goes out, it either goes out to their cellphone, their home phone, whatever numbers that they have logged in to...
You have to get a list of...
Yep, but it's all already in there. It's already, when kids register, we have cellphones, we have home phones, we have email addresses. Everything's already in Power School. So it's not freeening. If we went to another system, one of the things that every day it will update the system versus if we went with, Emergency Alert is another system. If we went with them, we'd have to actually do a data dump every night or however, however often we wanted to update the system. They don't communicate. This is a like sub-communication of Power School, so it's really well-integrated. So if a parent could actually go into Power School and update the information, and if we had an emergency 10 minutes from that point in time, it would go to that updated information.
Does it make phone calls?
Yeah, it does phone, cell, yeah, it does phone, email, text. It can be any kind of group we set up. No, I just wanted to get your consensus that this is some, because obviously, I mean, maybe some parents who don't want a snow call that says we're not having school today. So just so you know, we're investigating this.
That'd be one of those.
Right, and there would be an opt-out of that, but just like that's where this will lead to. So I just, I wanted the board to know this was something we were more seriously looking at at this point, so that if you had...
I think Maggie wants that phone call.
Yeah. I would send them emails. So, okay, can we go pursue it? Yeah. This is all me today. Nurse EMT discussion. So again, this is something I'm just looking for board feedback on. So we have a nurse currently at Bartlett who is retiring at the end of this year. We have budgeted for a nurse at Glen Lake as opposed to the LNA, and I think we've committed to moving forward with that. One of the other conversations we've been having, as regulations have changed, we have two EMTs at the high school, one at high school and one at the middle school, working conjunction with our nurses. One of the issues that we have found as regulations have changed is they are really limited on what they can do, really limited. If the nurse is not in the office, they can do nothing. They can't assess, they can't take temperature, they can't give medication, they can't look at a child and say you are sick, because that is assessing. And so we've stepped back, we've researched. Interestingly, the model we have predates me. There is not another school district in New Hampshire that employs EMTs. And there's clearly now a reason why, because of the limited role. One is that now with the regulations changing and they're clamping down on things. So what we are proposing to do, we've looked at the budget dollars, is to, so let me back up. Another issue we're having is nurse substitutes. We have lack of nurse substitutes. We have nurses with extremely high attendance issues. That's what we're addressing in a different way. But, so what we're recommending we do is take the pool of money we have for the four positions. So we have the nurse budgeted at Glen Lake, we have one budgeted at Bartlett, and the two EMT physicians, the money we have budgeted, and look to hire four nurses. So the high school and the middle school will be staffed with two nurses, as opposed to a nurse and an EMT, which when I look at other high schools and middle schools in comparison, is not outrageous. There are several other schools of that similar size with those same, with that same ratio. What it will also do is provide us with nurse coverage if a nurse is out. We would then, we would have seven nurses to pull for five locations. And so if a, if, if the Bartlett nurse was out, we would pull either the middle school or high school second nurse to cover that. And so we would always have nurse coverage somewhere unless we had three nurses out. But, so it would help us eliminate the need for always finding nurse substitutes. So I guess I'm just looking for the board's thoughts, if they had any concerns with going to that model. We believe with what money's budgeted, we can hire four, yeah.
Is the EMT's cost the same as the nurse's?
No, no, but not getting into personnel with what we have budgeted. The nurse at Bartlett has been there a long time, so she's on the higher end of the scale. Several of them take health insurance that is budgeted at a fairly high cost, so we think if we can look conservatively at nurses, I mean, we obviously can't look at a master step 20 foot, you know, top of the scale, but if we look conservatively at nurses, we should, we believe we can fill them with four nurses.
And there's enough work for, like, right now, there's enough work to sit through of the nurse and EMT, but the EMT isn't doing what the nurse does.
The problem is the EMT's role is so limited with the change in regulations. They really, one is if the nurse is not there, if the nurse is not present, they can, they literally are basically a secretary in that office. And so I just, I think the role has changed and it no longer fits our needs.
So what would happen to our employees if we improved?
We would look, we would offer them probably para positions, but basically they would be ripped. If they did not want those positions, we would rip them. So if we ever went back to that model, they would have up to two years to be able to be eligible to come back to that position.
So we have to...
Yeah.
Because I know too, I know we had a conversation previously about the substitute points for the nurses. One of our challenges is that we aren't offering competitive wage against the hospital, like any nurse.
Like any nurse will go work a day at the hospital versus coming here for $75 or $65.
It's not, and I don't think it's competitive within the state. I think other districts offer...
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely, there's not a lot of them out there that are, that want to substitute, and then you're competing with all of your local districts. So we have just, it's been a struggle for us and so thinking outside of the box holistically, we thought, boy, if we had seven nurses, now you always have a pool to shift, you know, to kind of shift people from.
I think too, if you ever spend your time in the nurse's office, you'd be amazed.
I've seen it, but like they do, I just...
It's like a crazy place, generally speaking. Blue season, there is a lot of mandatory paperwork that needs to be done. Parents need to be notified. I mean, this is some of the stuff that goes on. There's a lot of medication.
Right now, we have four medications.
One LNA, two EMTs. Along with all the road stuff, so. Especially for 1,000 people. Four nurses, two EMTs, and an LNA. And we only have four.
So we're gonna, we are gonna change the FTEs?
Right, we're not changing the FTEs, we're just changing the roles.
If this makes a difference anymore, yeah. We measure these things as full-time equivalents. There's not going to be any change. Who fills them, yes. The qualifications of who fills them, but in terms of the positions themselves... But in terms of the positions themselves and their ability to access benefits, there's not going to, there are going to be seven full-time equivalents where we currently exist. There will be seven under the new law. You probably already have all figured that out. I didn't.
So if there's no objection, no, I think, I mean, administratively, you know, we're just looking at a shift and so we'll bring that, just we'll bring that forward as we bring forward nominations and we'll start to hide. One of my goals to bring in today was, obviously it means us hiring four nurses, so we want to be able to start right after the vote and bring that forward, so. So Mike, and there's, I have two other new business agenda items that, one was, they both came in today. I have a request from a parent of two students at Maple Ave. They are moving out of the district on April 16th. They have a fourth grader and a second grader at Maple Ave. They are requesting permission to keep their children here through the rest of this year. My recommendation to the board traditionally doesn't go beyond a month. April vacation is the week, the end of that week, so my recommendation to the board would be to allow the student to remain through April vacation. And if they would like to stay for the rest of the year, that they would be eligible to do that by paying tuition because I mean, that's what the board has.
I'll make that motion.
Any other questions or further information?
Yes, they would have to, yeah.
So, so beyond April 16th?
Yep.
The motion would be that they're more than welcome to stay at Maple Avenue. The conditions would be transportation and tuition.
Beyond April 20th or not?
Yes, so after April, April vacation is, if they decided to return on the 40th, correct. Tuition would be from the 30th on.
We've got clarity on that. Any other questions?
Assuming there are no more notice, where are we as far as any of the year?
June 20th?
June 20th, I think, yeah, that's the number that's sticking in my mind. Look on the bottom of my superintendent's notes. I keep track.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Yeah.
Opposed? Extentions? Or extension?
And just my last is just another FYI, if anybody has any concerns, I would just like to hear about them, is I spoke with Gary today. We're in the process of working with Apple to exchange the computers and get the new computers for April vacation. We have two laptop carts that have really old, I think they're over five years old, computers. What we talked about doing was instead of trading in 50 of our three-year-old computers, we're going to trade in, we'd like to trade in 50 of the laptop cart computers and keep 50 of the three-year-old computers, replace them in the cart. The only reason I'm telling you that is that when we spoke about the bid and the cost, we were talking about a $30,000 trade and it will be less than that because obviously they're not going to give us the same for the 50 old ones, but economically, it makes the most sense to do that. Because otherwise, next year, we're going to be asking you for 50 brand-new computers. So we'll take three-year-old ones and replace them and it makes more sense in a cycle. So if people don't have objections, we're just going to move forward with that, but I wanted you to know because it's a change of what we had originally planned to do, so.
Makes economic sense. Any questions, concerns?
Just one co-curricular nomination, and I did print it out because it was only one. I'm bringing forward Matthew Fleming, who is being nominated as the Gofftown High School JV softball coach. He is new. He has nine years of coaching experience, has been a police officer in New Boston and Bedford. I believe he was. Let's see. Gofftown High School, yes. Doesn't say what year, but yes.
Need a motion to approve the nomination. Frank, a second. Shiny, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Suzanne?
Yeah.
Any other business that may legally come before the board? Susan, no. Is there a second?
I'll second.
She was agreeing. All in favor? Opposing?